Ladies and gentlemen, let me open a regular meeting of the City Council of Pearland for Monday, February the 27th, year 2017. I can't believe the year is going by so fast. If you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by Councilmember Tony Carbone, and our Police Chief Chris Doll will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Y'all would bow to your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another great day. Thank you for all the blessings and liberties that we take for granted each and every day, be it those who are out there serving to protect us, both here, here in Pearland, around the state, and around the world, protecting our freedoms and liberties. Help us to make wise and honoring decisions that are pleasing to you tonight, and get everybody home safely. It's your name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in our Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one man indivisible.
I want to express our appreciation for you being here tonight. We have council meetings, we seem to be here about every Monday night, either for a council meeting, or for a workshop, or for joint public hearings, but it's always good to see our citizens in the audience here tonight. And we are one of the cities that makes sure that we invoke the aid of deity when we start our meetings, and also do the pledge to the American and the Texas flag. And we're very honored to have all of you here to participate in our event tonight. It's rather long, but I think that you'll find out a little bit more about Pearland. We're growing, you know, we're the eighth fastest-growing city in the nation. If you don't believe me, just get on the road and try to race across town on one of our streets. It doesn't work too well. That's what's called built-in traffic control. But we're delighted that you're here, and we think that you'll find that there's a lot to learn about Pearland, and we'll share some of that with you tonight. Starting off, let's move in our agenda, and I'm using the same agenda that you have. I just got through calling the order, and we did the pledge and the allegiance and the invocation. And we have a roll call, and let the record reflect that Councilmember Hill is absent from the chamber tonight, and will be unable to join with us in the future. And the next item on our agenda is item four, citizen comments. And I do have four citizens that would like to make a comment before you tonight. What I'd like for you to do is to come to the podiums when I called your name. I have your seat. And I need to have one of these signed by a person that is doing a comment, because it's not a posted item on the agenda. We have posted items 72 hours in advance of the meeting date. And of course, appearing tonight, you're not on the agenda as an item, so this would certify who you are, where you live, and we'll put this in the minutes of our meeting.
Make sure they understand that we can't dialogue with you.
Yeah, and when you come to the podium, be sure and give us your name and address. And because it is not a posted item, we will not be able to dialogue with you if you have any questions or anything, but we will take your questions into consideration, and thank you for being here. Let's start off with Greg Hewitt, which is fortunate. Greg, good to see you tonight. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. My name is Greg Hurwitt. I live at 13507 Silent Walk Drive in Pearland. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your service to our community. I've been a resident of Pearland since the year 2012. My family lives approximately one and a half miles east of Blue Ridge landfill. We have been observing offensive odors coming from the landfill since the middle of 2015, and we have been reporting these occurrences to TCEQ and to the city. I would like to remind council that Pearland City Council agreed to a legally binding settlement agreement with Blue Ridge landfill in 2009. In exchange for this agreement, the city withdrew its opposition to the BRL permit expansion sought in 2006. The city's opposition was enjoined with nearly 1,500 residents and organizations at the time contesting the landfill's expansion. By withdrawing from the opposition, it essentially allowed the permit expansion to proceed. The settlement agreement is also a covenant with the citizens as a means of insurance to ensure that the landfill operates lawfully and in a way that protects human health and the environment. Although the city does not regulate the landfill, it does have a legal agreement with the landfill for numerous high-performance standards. The agreement requires the landfill to provide the city with a number of items, including access for onsite inspection of liner construction, rights to review or comment on groundwater contamination plans, more stringent post-closure care standards, reduction in Class 1 waste area, requiring six inches of soil for daily cover, and a number of other items that are outlined in the agreement. The agreement also provides for compensatory and punitive damages by the city if BRL breaches the agreement, which is not limited to attorney's fees. Again, all of these restrictions are legally binding between the city and BRL, and each sets a higher standard than the permit issued in July of 2010. As you all now know, TCEQ air monitoring section has issued two NOEs to BRL following investigations in response to citizen complaints. The TCEQ notice of enforcement reports documented appalling conditions surrounding BRL indicating site-wide failures in surface emission monitoring, and documenting dozens of significant engineering failures to capture landfill gas as required by state and federal law, a stipulation of the TCEQ permit. I understand additional investigations by TCEQ may be underway by purview of TCEQ waste and water sections. Based on what appears in TCEQ reports to be a failing landfill, other systems such as landfill liner, groundwater protections, and verification of acceptable waste are all suspect and warrant greater scrutiny by the city. I'd like to issue a call to action. We would like the city to add the BRL 2009 settlement agreement to the next city council agenda for public and council comment. We'd like the city to continue to enforce the enumerated requirements of the settlement agreement with BRL. Pearland should seek compensatory damages from BRL for proven loss of property tax revenue. And because of true findings by TCEQ air section resulting in two NOEs at BRL, and discovery that BRL has not complied with the enumerated requirements of the 2009 agreement, Pearland should now hire an independent attorney to review all enforceable actions of the 2009 settlement agreement to ensure BRL is in compliance with both the agreement and the permits by TCEQ. The settlement agreement allows the city of Pearland to seek recovery of attorney fees from BRL. Thank you.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Kami Bradley. Kami, thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's Brady.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kami Brady, and I live at 13302 Jasmine Peak Court in South Lake. We are near the Blue Ridge landfill. And I also have a statement that I'm going to read, and I significantly shortened it for you this evening. Since mid-2015, TCEQ has received over 2,100 odor nuisance complaints with growing frequency. As the odor incidents have climbed in numbers, so has our band of residents who have been impacted and are now demanding action. We have more than 900 community and resident members in our online group dedicated to demanding the odors cease. In October, after months of investigation during which several of their own investigators reported feeling nauseous, TCEQ issued a formal notice of enforcement to Blue Ridge landfill, identifying them as the source of the odor. A second NOE was issued in January after their investigation revealed 136 points of leaking landfill gas that exceeds the EPA limit of 500 parts per million. One location was leaking an amount over 324 times the EPA limit. Growing numbers of West Pearland residents have successfully appealed and negotiated lower property taxes based on this issue alone. We thank John and the city of Pearland for leading the West Pearland Odor Task Force, and for all the ways many of you, council members, have been engaged in this issue. But we believe it is still in the best interest of the suffering neighborhoods, the schools, and the organizations to continue to press for third-party professional oversight and a responsible solution to this problem. You represent and work on behalf of families and children in West Pearland. I am here today insisting that you take action on behalf of the residents you serve. We insist that the city of Pearland harness the teeth in its settlement agreement with Republic Services to take separate legal action against Blue Ridge for being in breach of the 2009 settlement agreement with the city of Pearland, specifically grossly exceeding maximum methane emissions. The hire of an independent third-party expert council does not infringe upon any of the current TCEQ investigations, NOEs, or subsequent actions. The two are not mutually exclusive. A small group of our task force residents met recently, and we dissected the settlement agreement line by line. We did this as thoroughly as we've conducted the detailed air and odor dispersion modeling to determine the source was Blue Ridge, well ahead of TCEQ coming out to investigate. We did this as thoroughly as we put together illustrations of what responsibly operated landfills and properly capped cells look like. We did this as thoroughly as we pulled together two large resident meetings back in October to bring everyone up to speed and mobilize grassroots action. As residents with full-time jobs, a small group of less than 10 of us has contributed hundreds of hours since 2015, doing what should be the duties of an independent environmental attorney or expert consultants. Without needing a law degree, it is so clearly written that the city of Pearland holds a lot, and I mean a lot, of power when it comes to Blue Ridge landfill. It is spelled out in the settlement agreement that all attorney's fees incurred by the city may be charged back to Blue Ridge landfill. It's also spelled out very clearly that upon breach of the agreement, of which TCEQ has already investigated and confirmed, the city of Pearland has the power to not only enforce compliance, but close Blue Ridge landfill. We want you to be the heroes in this. We really do. We're on your side, and we know you're on ours. We know that many of you feel you've gone above and beyond what other cities may have done. But the city of Pearland signed that original agreement. You made and agreed to those provisions. By not exercising the power that was granted to you in the 2009 settlement that you made with Republic Services, you leave all the residents you serve asking the ever-important question, what's keeping you from exercising your rights, and subsequently, our rights, in the agreement? Thank you.
Good. I appreciate those comments. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let's move to the next citizen, Edward Mears. There he is. Yeah. Hi, Edward. Good to see you. Thank you for being here.
Edward Mears, 2827 Moss Lake Lane, Pearland. Mr. Mayor, council, thank you very much for having us this evening. I also have prepared a statement. I've been a resident since the summer of 2015, and live approximately two miles east of the Blue Ridge landfill. My family began observing the offensive odors from landfill in the fall of 2015, and we have also been reporting those to the city and TCEQ as requested. At the council meeting of April last year, you may recall, myself and many of our other residents were here, and we pleaded for your help, and I came to the conclusion already that the source is Blue Ridge landfill. You guys, thank you very much. You guys created the Odor Task Force and allowed me to be on that task force and continue to serve with Mr. Branson and his staff, and they've done an outstanding job serving the council and the residents in the west, as we've continued to work with TCEQ on identifying the source and coming to some conclusion. Now, last year, I was successful at protesting the value of my home, down by 7%. It's a larger home, so it's a little bit more on the books. That effect was essentially $200 for city of Pearland alone on taxes. And at least 40 of my fellow residents I know of followed suit and did the same, and it was solely, it was accepted by the appraisal district based on the odor issue. All of their disputes I had for my property valuation were discarded, but the odor issue was accepted as the reason for devaluing or reducing the valuation of my home. That has a negative effect for all the taxing entities, especially Pearland, and Alvin ISD, who packs taxes twice as much as you guys do, or as our city does. And that sets a new baseline, that you can only go up by 10% every year legislatively. So imagine if we had 1,000 residents with similar results. That's 200,000. Or if we had 6,000 homeowners out there, like we have, who are affected and aware, that's $1.2 million. So, in essence, the city is being damaged. It already has been damaged by this effect of the odors. And so not only do you have an opportunity through the settlement agreement to seek opportunities to bring Blue Ridge into compliance, or even reduce its permit effectiveness, but the city may also enter into a civil complaint because of the damages it's incurred by Blue Ridge, and it can either join the private lawsuit, which is already underway, or you could work together with the other municipalities and the school districts who are also negatively affected by this. So my call to action is, I'd like to see on the council agenda of the next meeting, a discussion by citizens and council about this issue, about Blue Ridge, and what we can do with the settlement agreement. I'd like to see that the council enforce fully the 2009 settlement agreement, that all lines and items are in effect, being used and explored, and Pearland should seek compensatory damages, even though I benefited from a reduced tax liability. That's the city and all the taxing entities' loss, and they should recover that from Blue Ridge. Thank you, council.
Good. I appreciate your comments, Mr. Mears. Appreciate you being here tonight. We do have one other citizen. He happens to be the chairman and president of our Chamber of Commerce, Carol Arts. You check. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. I just want to give you a brief report on the success that we had with Pearland Day in Austin. We had about 100 community leaders there that participated in various events. We visited 100 of our legislators, taking them the policies and issues that we have in 2017. We also attended the tech stop meeting. We had about 60 people there that attended that. We had great coverage from our representative, Ed Thompson. It was a great event. Our leadership, Pearland, was there and was able to engage with our public officials and our community leaders. So appreciate Pearland being in Austin this week. Some of us will be going back for Presory County Day, and great recognition at the House and Senate level, so thank you all.
Good. I appreciate your comments, and we enjoyed it very much. Thank you. That information in the record, and thank all of you for your comments. It's greatly appreciated, and thank you so much. And glad time. Moving in our agenda to item number five. Item number five, which is council input and discussion items. Item number one, I'd like to play the city manager to address this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two presentations this evening, and the first one is, last year, the council commissioned a study of our fire services. Cities obviously grown, we've invested a lot, but we wanted to take a step back, get some expertise towards what's the future hold in terms of expectations and plans and demands upon our fire service. So we engaged with Citygate, had a very good reputation, and they're here tonight, provided briefing. And before they get on, I want to ask Chief Frye just to say a couple words. So, chief.
Thank you. As the city manager said, we've been working on this since August, I believe, is when we started collecting data. Citygate has a tremendous amount of experience in this area. We've made significant improvements in fire EMS delivery in Pearland. We still have significant challenges and opportunities to address in the future. With us today is Mr. Stuart Gary from Citygate Associates. He's been involved in almost 200 of these studies across the United States, including in some cities that actually were growing faster than Pearland, if you can believe there's any like that out there. In addition to having previous experience as a fire chief and these 200 studies, he's also spent eight years as a city council member, so he has a wide variety of perspective on this type of analysis. So without further ado, I'll let Stuart Gary take over.
Good evening, Mayor Reed. Members of the council, pleasure to be here. I know you have an almost 200-page technical report before you. This will not be sleep by PowerPoint, but let me try to hit in about 15 or 20 minutes the high points of the findings of the study, and then the chief and I would be happy to take your questions.
For the purpose of record, would you tune in, your name and...
Yes, I'm Stuart Gary, the fire practice principal for Citygate Associates.
So we'll record that appropriately in a minute. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to start with, every emerging city struggles with keeping infrastructure, police, fires, roads, traffic, commensurate with growth. And cities that grew out of an all-volunteer, proud, historic operation typically get to the point in their growth curve where they transition to career staffing, and yet they still need to add stations and crews commensurate with the development of neighborhoods. But in America, this first slide is very important. The provision of fire services, the timing of their response is a local control issue. There are no federal or state minimum standards for response times in fire and EMS. The Commission on Fire Accreditation, Citygate, other national entities, recommends a risk-based approach, where you look at the risks to be protected, the outcomes you would like. Should a house fire be confined to the room of origin, the house of origin, or the block of origin? Would you like a patient salvageable with a medical problem when 911 is called, treated, and hopefully transported to a hospital to survive or not? When you set those policy outcome points that I'm about to go through, then it's fairly easy for the analyst to calculate from the endpoint how many people, on how many units, and how many minutes must arrive to meet that goal. And I'm going to show you some maps and figures for the public at home, if you keep two things in mind about fire service deployment. And I take them from a military infantry analogy. It's about the speed and the weight of the attack. The speed is the neighborhood, single-based crew who handles everyday typical emergency by themselves. The weight of the attack is the massing of multiple crews to very serious events. And if we space the neighborhood stations too far apart, then I can't mass them together quickly enough for serious events. And here's the infantry analogy. If I send too few troops too quickly into battle, what happens? I lose. I'm overrun. If I send too many troops two days late into battle, what happens? I'm overrun. Fire, when it's burning in a structure, doubles in size every single minute of free burn. It doubles in size. So I'm going to go through some of those risks and outcomes, and give a picture on how you make policy choices for outcomes. The first one is called the time-temperature curve. That's that rate of fire growth in a building. It's EMS survivability, if the medical situation is so severe that oxygen may not perfuse to the critical organs, starting with the brain and the heart. Most communities this size and larger want to suppress outdoor and miscellaneous fires in wildland areas from spreading to structures. Said this way, you'd like to keep small fires small. A normal fire shouldn't have to grow to greater alarm catastrophic proportions, saving those people with life-threatening medical problems. The policy risk becomes in growing communities as you add fire stations. Do you want equitable response time coverage to all neighborhoods? And if you can't afford equitable coverage to all neighborhoods, what is then your result master plan to incrementally add fire crews funding permitting? So here's the time-temperature curve in a structure fire. I'll just say this, time accelerates to the right, and as that arc and the fire grows, anywhere from six to eight minutes, certainly no later than 10 minutes, from 911 being told there's a fire in a building, the fire has grown to what we call flashovers, consuming the room of origin and dangerously spreading into the rest of the building. If you want to stop that fire from totally consuming the building, you need to start to get water and people on it before it consumes and leaves that first compartment. About 10 minutes from the time of 911 saying, what's the problem? In medical emergencies, if the brain starts to not get enough oxygen, brain death begins in four to six minutes and becomes irreversible in eight to 10 minutes. So these two time curves line up to say, if you want to intervene and keep small fires small, if you want to keep life-threatening emergencies treatable, the first crew needs to arrive within seven to eight minutes of 911 saying, hello, what is your problem Response time measure advice to achieve those goals. Response time is three component parts. Dispatch processing, it takes more than a few seconds to say, what's the problem? What do I need to send? Where are you? Crew turnout, as the trade calls it, is donning, the mandated protective clothing, getting the rig moving, and then driving time over the road network. And I list a variety of organizations that offer best-practice advice on response times and outcomes, but as I stressed on the first slide, that is advice. My advice is just that. It's up to this council to set ultimately its service-level goals. The best-practice advice there on the bottom of this slide would say, in urban suburban population densities, like you all are growing Pearland into, the first due truck should be there within seven minutes and 30 seconds of 911 saying, what's the problem? The massing of multiple units should take about eight minutes driving time, plus dispatch, plus turnout. So by about 11:30, I've got a force of three to five units there to deal with a serious emerging house fire. Those are broken into three slices of about 90 seconds for dispatch processing, 90 seconds to two minutes for the crew to hear what it is, get the safety equipment on and be rolling, and then four minutes driving over the road network. If you look at your response times today, total response from fire dispatch saying hello to first unit on scene, 90% of the emergencies are reached in 13 minutes and three seconds. By fire station area, that time ranges from a little over 12 minutes to a little over 13 minutes. That's your real-world history in a data year we're calling Report Year 1516, so it's the most recent data. If you then say, okay, in the study, I say dispatch and turnout processing is close to best practices, just a little bit of fine tuning, and it's right on the mark, why are these times so long? If we look at travel time, strictly the driving distance from the begin-to-end point, the distances by station area are anywhere from just under nine minutes to just over 10 minutes. Round it off, 10 minutes plus three minutes for dispatch and turnout, you're back at 13 minutes. So the driving time, the spacing of stations, is what's causing the total response time measures. When we look at your data overall, many times a client will say, well, is there just a part-time crew I can put in, or just a day-of-the-week crew? You have a fairly homogeneous standard pattern of incident demand every hour, every day, seven days a week. If you were to put peak-hour units on, they would need to be in the afternoons and early evenings, seven days a week. That would buy you a little bit of time as you continue to grow your fire services system, but you would still need 24/7-based, neighborhood-based first-due units. You're running almost 27 incidents a day on average. 70% of those are emergency medical. But here's the point, while emergency medical gets the volume attention, you still need a standby fire force, not always committed to emergency medical, to handle fires, specialty rescues, auto accidents, et cetera. So the art of fire crew deployment in a very busy paramedic system is to still have enough firefighters available and yield the EMS system needs. Fires are only about 3% of your total actual workload, so what a community buys in fire protection is literally fire insurance. If we have a fire, what is the desired outcome, and what are our taxpayers willing to pay to ensure that that outcome more likely than not happens? These are your calls by hour of the day. These are your calls by hour of the day, and again, even at 3:00 AM in the morning, there is a demand for service. Service demands peak early afternoon and again evening rush hour. Population density and humans doing activities cause medical demand for service, and that is 70% of your workload. Simultaneous incidents in a five-station system are also an issue. You have five fire engines plus the ambulances. At any given time, peak hours of the day, you have two incidents open at once. So there's two units committed. Three units are committed 25% of the day at peak hours. So because most incidents occur when humans are very active, your remaining fire force falls to only two or three units during those hours. This is a heat map by hour of the day by station area. Red is more activity to green is light activity. You can see stations five, four, and one have the greatest quantity of calls hour after hour during daylight hours. They then draw stations three and two into the busier areas to handle those response times. Because they have simultaneous calls, and I just showed you 10, 11, 12-minute travel times, some of those times are units crossing three districts away to get to the third call in a row. So it's a queuing problem. It's not only just a geography problem. So this is what traffic engineering models that we use for deployment says is the four-minute driving time reach of the current five fire stations. And you can see that the pale yellow is city and ETJ in a light green color. So you can see the current road network doesn't begin to be completely covered within four driving minutes of a fire station. But I want to pause. Your city manager made the point, fire chief makes the point, I will make the point. You are a growing city. No city is fiscally able to add fire stations exactly as new growth comes online. You need enough growth to have enough tax base increase to add crews, and you have been proactive. You have added crews and stations the last five to seven years. This is a best-practices master plan point to say, you've grown this big, your general plan continues to evolve and envision a future. How many more stations and crews will the community need to more adequately cover the neighborhoods? If we turn on traffic congestion modeling, which is the red on top of the green, that's the shrinkage of coverage due to traffic congestion. We can now get the traffic congestion throughput data, like Google and Apple are putting it on your phone when they tell you, "Don't take that road ahead. It's red. It's congested." We can now slow travel times in the model. And traffic congestion here is bad at certain hours of the day and is slowing the reach of the trucks and the ambulances. If you look at the effective response force, that's that multi-unit crew to something serious. The green areas today are where two engines, a ladder company, and an ambulance can reach in eight minutes driving time. Again, it's not yet the entire city, but it's much the core of the city. If you turn on traffic congestion, however, getting multiple units only occurs in the small red sections in the center of the city where those stations can come together in the center and help each other. This is just a function of not quite yet enough stations in the city. This is a map of what are called hotspots or the density locations, EMS calls, 70% of your workload, and you can see where zoning has placed more humans per square mile, you have a higher demand for service. And much of this demand is near the five fire stations or in between the five fire stations. But you still have enough demand out to the edges that causes in the aggregate the travel times to be longer. Structure fires are also occurring over a three-year period, spread amongst the five fire districts. It's not just all in one location in the community. If we looked at your master plan for stations and the road mile gaps we identified in this study and turned on three more stations as an illustration, you had planned seven in the southeast corner, eight in the northeast corner, and if you and the unincorporated area were to find the money to staff the ETJ station, I said if, I said find the money, not a Pearland, pure civic responsibility, that would, this would be your coverage in green with eight stations and in red, the improved coverage at rush hour. Still more coverage than you have today, but still not complete. This, however, is the multi-unit improvement with just three more fire stations. So I showed you patches of not being green and at red hardly being anything for multi-unit coverage. So mathematically, a little hard to get your heads around. If I add three stations, I'm barely increasing percentage-wise my single-unit coverage because there's just so many road miles in Pearland. But if I add three more companies and three dedicated ladder trucks eventually, I can get my effective multi-unit coverage up to 88%. That's a stunning move forward in investment from those, that number of companies. This is what the math looks like. Currently at four minutes with no traffic congestion, the five crews are reaching 37% of the streets. That falls to 21% under traffic load. The multiple-unit effective response force hits 32% uncongested, only 5% congested. Add three more stations, the first due coverage jumps to 47%, and as I just said, the uncongested multi-unit coverage jumps to 88%. That's the payback, the return on investment for three more companies. In deployment, our key findings are due to street design and topography. Travel time will not be improved without added stations or at least peak-hour-of-the-day companies. Mutual aid coverage is too far away to be a primary first-unit response backfill. Your dispatch crew turnout and your overall technical operations, leadership, equipment, staffing, I'm not going to waste the words on them other than to say they're fine. You're running a newer, invigorated, best-practices-based agency. This is strictly just a question of quantity over geography. The policy question remaining as you take the next step in the evolution of Pearland is, what is your customer service outcome goal? That tells the chief and the staff how to plan for a master plan number of fire stations. And what is that balance point as you converse with your community over ability to pay taxes and what kind of fire and EMS response times they perceived to be delivered here? Our recommendation is if you adopt an urban suburban outcome-based response time goal, that would be four-minute travel for the first due unit, eight-minute travel for the ambulance, and the multi-unit force. To achieve that goal in the near term would require at least three more fire stations and three dedicated ladder companies. That's actually a total of six companies over the near-term years. And by time you fully develop to your general plan, build out population and city limits, you may need nine to 11 stations in total to achieve that, not counting, depending on what happens with ETJ. Swinging to headquarters staffing recommendations, again, we found a competent headquarters team who is now at capacity. You have added stations and companies and merged in the EMS bureau, but they're now full in terms of management team capacity. Before you add another station, we would recommend you fill the Operations Assistant Chief position, which is vacant. We would involve the 24-hour single-fire captain EMS supervisor to that of a full-fire captain for training and shift-training officer to assist the Incident Command Battalion Chief in serious situations and to increase crew training. We would civilianize and add a business manager to the Administration Bureau. We would add two administrative assistant support positions. You've got expensive mid-managers doing their own office support and paratechnical support work. Put that back on the job descriptions where it belongs and let the chief officers do the management and program development. The department is working on, still needs to broaden its policies and procedures and develop a career development guide, so a new firefighter can hire into the Pearland Fire Department and know what it takes to become a captain, a battalion chief, a chief of department someday. You also need to find the one-time CIP money to invest in a second set of protective clothing. OSHA decontamination procedures now, given the increased cancer awareness in the fire service. If I fight fire in my protective gear, it has to be decontaminated or laundered before the next fire. And the only way to effectively do that is to issue two sets and have one set cycled for decontamination while the on-duty crew wears the second fresh set. Our recommended next steps is for all of you to have a conversation about this draft. We can tune it up and add any further clarifications the staff and you all may request. We recommend all of our clients at this point absorb the policy recommendations and consider adopting when you're ready to do so. Revise fire department performance measures to drive your master planning in the years ahead. We would suggest, given the amount of fire services growth you need, to develop a growth to revenues forecast for three to five years, and look at your ability to fund increased fire services. You've got the human staffing cost, the apparatus cost, and the fire station physical plant costs to prep. Some of the staffing and the low-to-no-cost recommendations could be implemented, of course, over the course of the next fiscal year or so. If your growth cycle and your revenue cycle stays aggressive, and the mayor mentioned, I won't repeat it, the X something fastest city growing, because one of my fast-growing Arizona clients has just hired us back to say, "We're out of the recession. We're blowing the doors off again of growth." So I don't know who's number eight and who isn't right now. But if your station growth curve is aggressive, you may have to consider adding a planning officer to fire just to keep up with programming sites, buildings, hiring, and training of personnel. Because remember, you have to bring personnel on before you open the station to train them and to conduct promotions to open the next company. That is a burden, whether you're a metro department adding a station a year or Pearland adding a station every two to three years. With that, the chief and I would be happy to take any questions, and thank you for your attention.
I don't have a question, but just a comment perhaps. For a long time, the city was pretty well concentrated within five-mile radius of City Hall here, and one had three stations. And as we grew, we had a consultant that helped us define, and we started filling up the 70 square miles a little more thickly than what it was before. We decided, we went through the process of defining the service areas. And when we did that, well, we placed in each one of those hotspots, you know, as a service area. As we continued to grow, I guess one of the questions I have is, will we have to consider maybe readjusting those? We have the station there now, but maybe, there may be stations closer together instead of further apart in certain areas with one of them. And you mentioned broaden the procedures for the department. And my question of what that means, you might want to speak to that a little bit. And the other question I was asking was, several years ago, the ISO said that you guys are doing a good job, and we're moving the number in a positive fashion. And is there a possibility for that to move some more, which determines the fire rate and cost of the fire protection?
Three excellent questions. Let me take them in reverse order because the three and two are easier than the first one.
Yeah, I know.
So with regards to the ISO, yes, your classification may grow, but the ISO, which is the Insurance Service Office, sells underwriter data to the actual insurance companies. They're just describing your system to underwriters, and they're only describing it for one measure, one measure, to prevent the community from having a conflagration. They don't care about the single-building fire, and they absolutely don't rate a fire department for EMS. They don't care about a dumpster fire up against the wall of an apartment building that could quickly spread. They evaluate total firefighters, pumping, and water supply capacity to keep an American community from having a catastrophic multi-building fire. So from that scale, when you had stations, a little smaller footprint, you've got a good ISO rating, and certainly as you add stations, the rating will stay commensurate, if not get better. Number two, or on that point, the insurance companies, by the way, are not strictly bound to the ISO rating schedule. They can now ban rating categories and give preferred risk underwriting to buildings. So for the sake of discussion, discounting, I'll use the term Price-Cosco Warehouse, Home Depot can get a Class 1 insurance premium in a Class 3 rated city because they're inherently a safer building by virtue of construction sprinklers and humans in them 24 hours a day that see stuff begin to emerge. So I don't suggest my clients hang their whole hat on just the ISO. I'm sorry, the second question now was, I said it was easy. We talked about time over distance.
Oh.
Oh, excuse me, policies procedures.
Yeah.
So a growing, younger organization needs to develop standard operating procedures for different tacticals and personnel, non-tactical situations, and they need to then turn those into lesson plans and curricula so that as a young firefighter comes in and goes through their career, when they're younger and inexperienced, they have a set of guidebooks and a training manual and then are tested on those issues. You are developing them, it's just going to take more staff time to take them the rest of the way home. They very definitely have standard operating procedures, they're just not as complete and deep enough tied to the training manuals as we like. But it's also normal for a department this size to be exactly where they're at today. It's a reminder to staff and you and the city manager that you need to continue to fund the back-office headquarters needs. You just can't add line people and expect them to train and supervise themselves. Now with regards to response time, the older study methodology predates the current GIS technology, so they identified large zones and said, "Put a station sort of in the center of a zone and it ought to cover this much." Now dispatching has gone to GPS, called automatic vehicle location. You're familiar with it.
Oh, really?
Their computer sees a moving fire truck on the map and sends it to the closest call. We use a GPS-like technology in those crawl-distance maps to say, from fixed points where I house the equipment and tend to keep them in between calls and fire prevention activities, how many streets in a realistic number of minutes do they reach? Where you have gaps in the road network, you would use that technology to infill some stations. And your first move will be to add the three to four stations to fill in the largest gaps, stand back, assess how you're doing, and some of those smaller infill seams between the current stations you may never economically choose to fill in. But certainly getting the broader pattern complete of the outlying neighborhood stations is my recommendation and a place to start.
Good. I like your recommendations, and your study was very good. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. It's going to be interesting to actually put numbers to this, and that's where the rubber really meets the road, is how do we pay for it? Are the people sitting out there willing to foot the bill that it's going to take to do this? Something I would like to see is what these maps look like without ETJ. Let's take the ETJ out of the picture for current calls and for future calls and see what that costs. We know what running calls into the ETJ is costing us now. We know what we're getting reimbursed for that. And I think that's a discussion I would personally like to have. I don't know about anybody else. And with that, I have advocated that the area that Station 6 is in, we totally remove from ETJ and don't even look at annexing it at any point in time. So I would like to see what we look like if we moved that six somewhere. You know, can that be used somewhere else? Does it just totally fall off the map? Because my untrained eye, when I look at that last map you showed us with the, all the fire stations, we pretty much do a fairly good job of covering the city in that, and that's with six being down there kind of in a no-man's-land type area. So those are just my comments. Again, thank you for the work. To the department, thank you all for all that you all do.
I'd also be interested to see what...
Gary, if you don't, I'm sorry, can we go to Slide 21 just to look at that map? I want to make sure, is this the map you're talking about?
Yeah.
And I guess this is, just to clarify, this is where we're at now, or this is with the additional stations?
This is with, this is the multi-unit coverage with three additional stations.
Okay.
So what's interesting here is the ETJ station, if somebody, anybody, were to find the funding to staff it, doesn't yield any improvements demonstrably to this map. It's too far, it's too far out. If however, and I'm going to point to the screen behind me if you'll indulge me, I'm familiar with your staffing and growth plans, and staff and we have talked about what could happen here south of twos and west of sevens. So if this part of the community tends to intensify more quickly, you'll need eight, you'll need seven, and you'll be looking for something down in there. And if that's the money that might have been programmed for a hypothetical six and you want to consider that as a pulling over, that, again, we focused on, you're the client, the incorporated city of Pearland, and you had that today attachment out there that you're trying to make. Pearland, and you had that today attachment out there that you're trying to maintain the volunteer force in.
We look at that map, you, you have a lot of vacant spots, but right now, within our 70 square mile footprint, we have 156,000 people today. Some of them are in mud districts which you haven't annexed yet, but they were all.
And that, this is back to the single unit coverage map.
It's rather.
And at single unit coverage, you do have a lot of people, and, and that's why peak hours of the day, you remember I mentioned two and three calls occurring at once, straining a five-unit response force.
I'd also be interested to see what the response times would look like with McCard Road done and County Road 101 completed, and with the expansion of 518 that's coming.
McCard is in the model, as is new permanent Station One. Chief, off the top of my head, do you remember on the other two?
Bailey's included.
Bailey's in there too, okay.
Bailey's included. Staff gave us, and I'm sorry, just, I don't memorize all the road names for all the clients at this point in the project.
I'm having two, three different names, so.
But, but two, two or three of us sat with, and really got input with your track, with your GIS department, and, and we stared at the screen a long time and, and did add streets to the network that were conceivably funded or about to be funded and were really happening in the CIP. So this is a small forward-looking model with those prime connections, certainly no infill subdivision. Future streets are in the model yet.
Okay, thank you.
Rose?
Oh, I'm sorry.
If we go back to the, to the beginning, when you're talking about times, your recommendation to get one unit on the scene, seven and a half minutes, and then 11 and a half to get a full
Multi-force.
Multi-force there. And, and just to clarify, the numbers that we're seeing is it's taken 13, 13 and a half minutes to get one unit?
Correct.
When we should be getting a full multi-force there, two minutes sooner.
Correct.
Okay.
I didn't put the multi-unit response time on the, on the slide, but it's, it's north of 13 minutes.
Yeah, if it takes 13 minutes to get one there. Did, did you look at call types now at kind of the EMS level? And, and I guess where I'm headed is repetitive calls to the same address, acting more as a medical taxi service than providing, in my opinion, emergency medical care?
In the published study, no. Your, your staff and your EMS bureau, as it were, within fire is very good at that and identifying those. Your constructive headache is in almost any client I've got in the United States, is that with a decaying healthcare fabric that's affordable for all of us. In my 40-year-plus career arc, I, I started as a young paramedic firefighter, so I'm not fibbing when I say 40-plus years. Emergencies in the 70s were truly life-threatening emergencies, and that's all we went to. Now, life-threatening emergencies, depending on the socioeconomics of a community, are only about 16% of your ambulance responses. So we have become the healthcare of only resort, not last resort. And if I don't have preventative healthcare, I'd have nowhere else to turn, or I even can't get into an urgent clinic, I call 911. So they're, they're aware of that, and there are evolving things in American EMS to try to take that workload off the 911 ambulance and put it on a different vehicle and crew. But to date, the, the payer, the insurance pathway system isn't fully developed to tell you local communities whether they're going to pay you back for doing that or not. But your staff is really well-versed on this. They're forward-looking at that. We just don't have an answer for you today to kind of split that non-emergency workload. Chief?
Maybe the chief does.
I just wanted to, your question, as I understood it, is the data, it, does it include non-emergency calls?
Right, it does, right?
It, it is not. The.
Your response time data is fire and medical emergencies only.
And we don't, we classify, if we go to help somebody just get back up in bed, that's not coded in our data as emergency medical. That's assisting a citizen.
If I stub, stub my toe and I call in as an emergency, how's that classified?
That would not be classified in our data set as an emergency medical call.
Okay, so those aren't skewing these numbers?
No.
This is a true emergency. Somebody in the city has a heart attack, it's 13 and a half minutes on average?
Yes.
That's correct, but let me come back up a notch from the stubbed toe. Johnny falls off the skateboard. I don't know if his arm's broken or not. That's in this data set. I have severe bellyache. I don't know if it's chest pain or food poisoning. That's in this data set. But again, in the 1970s, would we have sent an ambulance with red lights and sirens? Do that? No. They would have called the doctor, they would have gone to the clinic, gone to the hospital. That's that swing I was mentioning in American medicine. There are general medical events here that are not life-threatening, but we've evolved as a society where we send a specialist team to just about any reasonable request. And it's those reasonable mid-weight medical events that are in the numbers I showed you this evening.
So is there any, or what are communities doing to, to address that?
They're starting pilot programs to send non-emergency paramedic-type crews to both do in-home, in-business, low, low emergent medical care. There are pathways trying to be developed that when you call in, if it's not 911, life and death, hang on, we're going to send you to a triage nurse or a physician. They're going to talk to you. They are going to ask you who your health insurance is. And they might say, well, Mr. Smith, we understand you have a stomach ache, but we don't feel it's a medical emergency now after listening to you for three or four minutes. But have we got a deal for you? There's a same-day clinic appointment. You can be seen at the Acme Clinic at 3:30 this afternoon. Mr. Smith says, I don't have a car. Fine, we will give you a taxi voucher or a bus ticket. We will help get you to the free clinic. And different variations of that.
Right.
Being piloted all across America. Because we can't continue to fund emergency 911 crews to non-emergent medical problems.
Okay. And I'm sure that the, the chief and the whole department's watching, but I'd be interested in looking at some of these pilot programs come to fruition, how that's working, and I guess what that would look like is if we're to roll something out in Pearland.
We're already working on that. We have a Community Paramedicine Task Force internally within the department that's exploring those options, and it's meeting with our local hospitals to see what we can work out. We are heavily governed by the State Department of Health, so there's some things we can do and some things we can't. But we are, we are staying ahead of it and looking at, at all the different options to, to help. They call it patient navigation from the field, so we're looking at those options now.
And last question, you mentioned the PPE, whatever that stood for, the gear?
Oh, Personal Protective Equipment.
Yeah. What, any ballpark on a number of what that would be? You mentioned a CIP project. That's a large.
We ran the number on the reserves, round numbers, 4,500, 5,000 each, times the head count, low, low six figures.
Okay.
Doable as a one-time CIP project. Far less expensive than the breathing equipment, but the breathing equipment has a much longer career life to it.
What's the life, what's the lifespan of the PPE gear?
Chief, what are you experiencing here? It's always a little different based on level of firefighting.
We try to change out about every five to six years. That's, it gets sent off for testing and repairs along the way, but by the time it reaches five or six years, in most cases, you have to replace it.
I guess thinking through that, one, one more thing. It was what, 2.5, 2.6% of the calls are actually fires? So has, has there ever been an issue where, where we're, I guess, we're not able to, to turn out a crew because they don't have the gear?
No, because what they're doing is, they're, they're simplistically decontaminating the gear, either just by dry brushing or a light rinse, trying to get a sun-dried fairly quickly. But if a call came in in the next three minutes, they're putting wet gear on, or they're putting partially contaminated gear right back on.
Okay. And then that's a health issue. Yeah, okay.
Long-term, it's just good risk management. You do have some of the special washers, washing machines to decon gear. It's just a lengthy laundering cycle. It gets them fully wet, and then they've got to be dried. So you just need to add a couple more of those units and get, get something for them to use in the meantime if they go to a really smoky, toxic-filled, working building fire and get those particles of combustion stuck and adhered to all that gear.
All right, thank you.
We just spent time talking about EMS. I, I just noticed, and I'm sorry, I didn't notice this earlier, the new stations were not showing medics.
Because in the report, we recommended the ambulances have an eight-minute drive-time footprint. So an ambulance effectively is like a ladder truck. It can cover a two or three-engine-sized area. What we've told the staff in the detailed part of Volume Two is you're approaching the point that the five ambulances may need daytime peak hour relief. So you'd likely start with a halftime ambulance to take some of the load off daylight hours. And that ambulance may not be, may not need to be posted out at Station Eight, for example, but maybe more in the core where there's a higher demand for service. So think of your ambulances as a secondary layer, larger travel footprint, and not automatically an ambulance per station, just like you don't put a ladder truck in every station.
Rose?
Hey, Mayor. Just to clarify a couple things from my adification. So when we're accounting for response time, if we have an ambulance or a fire truck that's out of the station for a non-emergency need, and it must be deployed to another, another call from there, is that accounted for in this response time? Are there assumptions that, is there an assumption that the deployment comes from the station at every, for every four-minute response?
Yes and no. So the times you described include to any fire and medical, emergency medical event, regardless of the starting point of the unit. They could be clearing a call. They could be doing fire inspections. They could just be out in the community, educating children. That starting point is a little fluid. But to space the number of crews and to try to get that equity of at least a crew per broad neighborhood, we use the GIS and the fixed-location tools to try to quantify, how many does it take at a static level to provide response times across the system? So the, no, those numbers are in the data, and they are dispatched when they're out doing something else. If you have three calls open and a fire call comes in, and one of the engines is on a minor medical call, and they can turn to Mrs. Smith and say, he's okay, here's a splint on us, take him down to urgent care, there's a building fire a mile away, they could certainly try to do that. So they're, they're going to go to the serious calls just as soon as they can get clear of, of a call they're on, if that helps answer your question.
It does. One of the first things I think I, I would, I would venture that people would ask is, in the remote areas of town, remote with respect to the response time, would creating a volunteer fire station be helpful in those areas that are difficult to reach? Now, I think, my belief is that, that those volunteer stations have not been all that successful, which is, and I, I think, chief, if you could kind of comment on that for the benefit of the audience.
As the demographics of Pearland has changed and the demand for service has changed, we've had fewer and fewer volunteers. Station Six is supposed to be an all-volunteer station, and we've heavily recruited out there for at least the last five years, and I think we have two people currently in class. It is very difficult, even nationwide, getting volunteer firefighters is a problem just because of the time demand and the training demand.
That's great.
With respect to this map, we've got some areas that are fairly remote, but we also have communities that have fire stations that we have interlocal agreements with. I know, forgive me if I'm wrong here, I believe we have an interlocal agreement with City Houston, with Brazoria County, to, to both serve areas that are near to our fire stations. So when we account for these areas, these remote areas, I think there's Fire Station 70 that's over on Black Hawk, or I'm sorry, on Beamer, that could serve, come in and provide response to City Houston, or to Pearland. That's a City Houston truck. I know there's Isle Colony of Fresno that have, has some area. Is any of that accounted for in the response time? Is there a reason why we would include it? Is there a reason why we would exclude it?
I think I can answer that, and Stu can pitch in. The City of Hu, we, if we ask for mutual aid from any of our neighbors, they provide it. However, most of those fire stations are greater than 15 or 20 minutes from Pearland. Many of them are volunteer agencies that have trouble getting volunteers to respond themselves. And you just, Houston has some fire stations close to us, but if they're on other calls, they're not available. And so we've had, when we've asked Houston for mutual aid, we've had units come as far away as downtown Houston to come out to help us because the other stations are busy themselves. So we have great mutual aid partners. If we call and ask, they don't hesitate to respond, but to rely on them as any type of a first response coverage would not be advisable.
Okay.
They're also in a separate communication center, so you've got inherent communication center lag, right, chief?
Yes.
Yeah, for your center to tell them, I, I'm needed at 123 Main Street in Pearland, and then they run their internal procedures, there's another minute off the clock.
Yeah.
The other thing, I mean, I think when it comes to particularly response time, and particularly with fire truck, and this is a less of a, a question about the study as it is for us on what we want to prioritize, you know, for a, for a fire call, we want to be there four minutes. Four minutes, it becomes deadly. But is our priority, and I know this sounds like a callous question, but is our priority to save the life of the person in the home or prevent the fire from spreading so it endangers people outside of that home? And I would, I know what the firefighter response is, is to save everybody's life. But is it a funding priority for us? And then, I know we've got problems with the state legislator with this issue, but how much would we benefit in that goal if we had the opportunity to create a requirement to, to put in fire sprinklers in residential homes as a city mandate? The state now forbids us. You know, would that provide, is there, is there any data or is there any success stories with respect to lengthening the response time i-if that tool is available?
I'll save the chief on this one because he has to live here. This is one of the few states in the country that to date continues to resist putting residential fire sprinklers in single-family dwellings. I was the chief of the department who did it. It was the third city to do so in California before I became chief of that department. We took a challenge by the Building Industry Association at the California Supreme Court and won the right of local government to make that determination. Communities that have all residentially sprinkled subdivisions, subdivision after subdivision, have wider station spacing, they have fewer firefighters per rig, you can put smaller water mains in and have less capacity for firefighting in the water reservoirs, all the things the ISO grades for catastrophic fire protection. There is most definitely an operational and economic benefit, in my opinion, in addition to life safety to residential fire sprinklers at about a buck, a buck 15 a square foot new construction added cost. Second issue, though, for Pearland at this tipping point in a master plan, is your revenue curve to add is very important. Today, your number of fires are small because you're still living largely on newer construction. If 25 to 40 years from now, your successors wanted to infill fire stations into existing neighborhoods, I will tell you from clients that have tried it, it's a tough road. It's almost two truisms in public administration. Really hard to close or move a fire station. It can almost be tougher, believe it or not, to site a new one into an existing neighborhood. So if your master plan guides 20 years of leadership here that we eventually want to achieve this number, and we start to secure some parcels and subdivider agreements to make it happen, and then we staff them, funding and growth permitting, I think you'd be in the long haul better off than kicking the can down the road a decade and hoping that infill could, could, could fix an issue someday.
Yeah. I, I would, I would just make a suggestion. I know there's some, a conversation on the, in, in the state legislator, in, in the state legislature. in the state legislature, to remove the prohibition to allow for local control on that. You know, I'd like us, if we see movement on that, and Chief, you'll probably know before we would, obviously, we see movement on that, at least let us have a conversation of whether that's something we want to explore. I'm not saying that it is something I would want to do or that council would want to do, but if it helps us with respect to these response times, and it helps us with respect to being able to provide a higher, lower the, the risk of life, then I think it's at least something we need to converse about. With respect to the PPE, you know, Chief Ryland and I had a long conversation about this some months ago, you know, about needing to expand that, needing to have everybody have access to another set of equipment so that if there's calls immediately after, they have something fresh and clean to wear. And it seems somewhat redundant on its face. But I do have a very good friend of mine right now who is a fire, a lifelong firefighter, and I'm forgetting the name of the disease, but his lungs are hardening. It is apparently a common disease that happens with firefighters, that and many other maladies, as a response to, as he says, eating smoke for the rest, for his whole life. I know that the, the standards have changed, at least from the conversation I had with, with the chief, the standards have changed to prioritize cleaning of the equipment and making sure that they're, they're not going into burning buildings without the proper attire. You know, I, I would like, personally, I would like us to prioritize that as well. Give them an opportunity to, to live longer lives without having to be on respirators. And if it's a low-six-figure investment for us, and it gives them an additional ten to fifteen to twenty years of life, you know, I, I think that's certainly worth the investment, in my opinion. Thank you for the study. I think it's very insightful.
Any other comments, Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, consultant and chief, what do you need from us? Because right now, it's, there's a couple of places that says council is not giving direction in terms of response time, so specifically, what, what do you need from us at this point? Where do we go from here?
At this point, I don't think we're asking for, for council to make a decision. But we ultimately, to develop the plan, we're going to need to know what your expectations are. Do you want that seven-and-a-half minute and that eleven-and-a-half minute to be the standard for the city? And then if you set those, then we can come back and tell you what that looks like in terms of stations and personnel and costs. So that's, that's one of the major things, is we need a general policy direction from you. Did I miss anything?
I guess the question to simplify even more, at the beginning, you said, are we willing to lose, do we want to stop the fire at the room, the house, or the block? And I guess my, my response would be, I don't, you know, of course you want to stop it before it spreads to the block. But if, if the first unit that can get there can get in and save the lives, and then we can stand back and protect the neighboring houses, I mean, I think that would be my goal. If we lose the whole house, but everybody lives, I'm, I'm fine with that. And in terms of the, on the EMS, do we want them to live or die? I'm gonna go with live. I don't know how that equates to time. Is that, does that get back to the seven-and-a-half and the eleven-and-a-half minutes?
It's pretty much seven-and-a-half and eleven-and-a-half, yeah. Because when that room, I mentioned flashover. Flashover is there's enough heat in the room that every combustible surface of the room ignites. It's all giving off enough gas to ignite. And that ball of fire gas is now getting into the walls, going down the hallway, through the door, and endangering lives. So if you don't get there at about the time of first room flashover, people that did not self-evacuate are in peril and need the fire service to help them out. Worse, semi-amelatory, they're very young, they're very elderly. Also, the second and third-story garden apartment-type constructions may need ladders to a balcony to have a second way out. It takes boots on the ground fairly quickly to solve those problems.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilmember?
Just a couple on what Councilmember Carbone said. I do think all of us want it, all of us want our priority to be, how many, how many lives can we save? But with everything that we, we want to do, we always run into the reality of the budget and what we can fund. And my belief is that, you know, what we, what we take a look at is a multi-year approach to say, you know, at some point in time, considering the growth, how can we get this, how can we plan CIP projects for the additional fire stations? And, and then where that coverage goes. And then use this study as a foundation for that plan and update this study every so many years to make sure that we're moving towards that goal. You know, I, I don't, I don't see us being able to fund six or seven fire stations in the next, you know, four or five years. Obviously, that's, that's not gonna happen. We have a few on the CIP already, but it still doesn't provide us the life-saving coverage that we would like, the under-four-minute coverage that I think we would all love to be able to see, where every street is, is in, is in green on this map. But maybe if coupled with the CIP, we say, in order to be able to get to that four-minute goal, here's where we would need strategically place those. And as the gentleman suggested, we start looking at land acquisition in areas where we think we may need it. And that way, we can, as imperfect as it may be, try and reach the goal at some point, or at least have a plan to try and reach the goal at some point, and not accept, well, we're just not gonna get there, so that's good enough. At least that would be, that would be my hope.
I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, and I agree with all the comments. We would love for no house to burn down and no one to lose their life. I, I don't want to see this body make promises or suggestions that we can't keep. And that would be, I totally understand getting land now where we think we need stations. We've seen what that's done in other places where people feel like, because the land's there and somebody said this might happen, that it's going to. I, I don't want to repeat that. So I, I just caution us when we talk about these things and what we would like to see and what is actually realistic, because I, I don't want to give false hope.
Let me wrap this up with a, okay?
I do have one question. So currently, we don't have a lot of high-rise buildings in Pearland. There's maybe a three-story building, four-story building. But here, very soon, we are probably gonna have some buildings that are much taller than that. So my question is, what do other cities do of our caliber that are still growing that end up with a bunch of high-rise buildings like that, and we're not equipped to be able to fight a fire at that height? Are there impact fees to those types of facilities? Or, I mean, how do they, how do they recoup the money to buy those bigger ladder trucks? Because they're significantly more expensive.
Several things. First of all, impact fees, absolutely. If there's stations and capital facilities or capital equipment under your local and state laws, ability to fund that. Second of all, depending on how tall the building, of course, is, they exceed ladder truck coverage. And at that point, under the building code, the high-rise fire and life safety laws are enacted. They're very safe. They're very good. Several major high-rise cities in the United States actually have their own high-rise fire codes that are more prescriptive than the national model codes. If you are really concerned about the type of occupancy of those buildings, you could consider being more restrictive if the legislature would permit you. Depending on the populations in those buildings, you might see your EMS demand go up, so you might need more ambulances on the street. So think about those high-rise buildings, not as much of a fire risk, but a vertical population risk, and you're increasing the people per square mile. And at some point, there's gonna be an EMS demand and occasionally an accidental fire that hopefully the built-in protection systems will slow down while the effective fire force gets there. So I wouldn't ordinarily say high-rise buildings are bad because they're a fire problem. They're common in America. The building code deals with them. If you have a really, really serious fire in a high-rise building, half of Houston's gonna be here to help you, regardless of your staffing, because a high-rise problem much above the fifth or seventh floor can easily, and I'm not exaggerating, easily be a 200 firefighter operation. So at that point, you're, you're off the books of whatever a suburban city. You, suburban cities fund for everyday, typical, predictable emergencies, small fires, house fires, EMS events.
Well, let me close this. Did you want to add some more there, Chief?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify for council. The direction that we're looking for is not necessarily, that's how, how can I put this? We're looking for a general direction. This is what we would like to be in Pearland. Tell us what it looks like to get there in five years, or ten years, or whatever the time is. So I, I want to make sure we're not asking you to promise us anything, but we need a target to shoot at so that we can develop a plan. And I did want to do, throw in one kudos to council. Because we've had strict apartment residential sprinkler systems, we've had many fires in the last five or six years and probably more that were confined to just one small part of that apartment because of that residential sprinkler system. And the major apartment fires we've had in Pearland, unfortunately, they were older and didn't have that sprinkler system. So we've made great inroads in terms of apartments, but we're pretty much behind the curve as far as single-family dwellings. So, thank you.
That's good. Well, let me wind this up with a final comment. From 1945 to about five years ago, we were served by a volunteer fire department, volunteer EMS. And the council made the decision to merge these two entities and has done a good job, and Chief Vance and his staff have done a superb job. I see this report as to, is to sort of see where we are at this point in the growth. And as the chief said, and what we need to do is, is take a look where we're gonna be twenty years from now, and what do we need to do, because we have a lot of vacant land. And, but we're gonna have an awful lot more people, so we're gonna need to look at that in the future. So thanks for the good job you did. I appreciate that very much. With that information on the record, let's move to item number two, which is, I'll ask Clay to set that.
Yes, sir. Another presentation that's important. City, every other year, we engage a firm that's expert in such matters to survey perceptions of our residents. It's a, a good business practice and want to assess what people think about, obviously, the range of city services, but there are some factors. And always use us some good information that we can tean to budget decisions and so forth, because we can't be all things to all people, obviously, and this helps us find out where we're at realistically and, and where we want to devote resources. So Sparkle's been running this program. Let, turn it over to her.
Good night, or good evening. Tonight, we have Erin Caldwell with the National Research Center here to present the results of our citizen survey. It began back in October of last year and ended just last month. This is the second time we've utilized the National Research Center to provide this service. This survey is really a tool for both you, city council, as well as us, city staff, to gain valuable insight of how the residents gauge our city programs and city services. So without further ado, I'll invite her up.
Thank you, Sparkle, and I'm very happy to be here tonight, council and mayor, or mayor and council members. And I did want to thank Sparkle on behalf of myself and our colleagues. She was a pleasure to work with and gave thoughtful feedback during this process. We collect quotes about cities at NRC, and this is one of our favorites. And this survey provides you, pardon me.
If you can move closer to the back panel, I think some of the people in the audience would be able to pick it up as well. Thank you.
Sure. So I was saying that we collect quotes about cities, and this is one of our favorites. And this survey does, as Sparkle said, provide you a chance to hear from a representative sample of this everybody in Pearland. This sample of residents provided their opinion about the quality of life and community livability here in Pearland by reading various aspects of the community here, evaluating the governance of the community, and the quality of services provided by local government. And they also told us about their level of participation in the life of the community. Great communities are partnerships of the government, community-based organizations, including the faith community, human service agencies, nonprofit civic groups, groups, and so on, and the business sector, as well as the people who reside in these communities. Thus, the burden of these results don't only fall on you, although government is definitely one of those key stakeholders for the quality of life in a community. And so we hope these results will be something that all stakeholders will be able to see and that they will reflect on what role they can play in continuing to make Pearland a great place to live, work, and play. We've examined a number of models for community livability and have found that many include the facets we have listed here. And our deliverables provide results in all of these areas. But I want to assure you, I'm not going to recite survey statistics around all of these. Instead, I'm going to quickly review how we conducted the survey and provide you some highlights from the survey results. For the City of Pearland implementation of the 2017 National Citizen Survey, 1,800 households were randomly selected to receive the survey. These households were contacted three times, and we received 278 completed surveys for 16% response rate. In addition, the city publicized an online version of the survey, which any resident could complete, and we received 455 surveys through this effort. We sort of consider that opt-in survey, the non-probability sample. So once we collected data from both sources, we looked at those data to see if we could blend those results. And we found that the non-probability samples' characteristics were similar to the probability sample and that we could blend those. National Research was one of the first organizations to conceive of the idea to create benchmarks of public opinion. And this allows jurisdictions to compare ratings of services to ratings of similar services from other communities. We find this is a, really a more fair comparison. We did this because several of us actually used to work for the City of Boulder in Colorado, and it was the street department that begged us to do this, because otherwise, they were always pitted against fire and library. They get much higher ratings, and street services tend to get lower. And so it was more fair to say, well, what is, what kind of ratings do street services get in other communities? And make that comparison. So there have been over 300 local governments who have conducted the National Citizen Survey, but we cast our net even wider for these benchmarks. Not only does our database include results from the surveys we conducted that are not the National Citizen Survey, but also from surveys conducted by other jurisdictions where those results have been made public. So there are results from about 600 surveys in our database, and about 350 of those are ones we've conducted. So there were 121 items from the survey that could be compared to the benchmarks. Of these 121 items, 15 received ratings that were higher than the benchmark, while nine received lower ratings. And then most of the ratings, 97, were similar. And I'll highlight some of these benchmarks later, but I just wanted to point out that you did very well compared to these benchmarks. There were 117 items from the survey that could be compared to the results from 2015. Of these, 33 received higher ratings, while only three received lower. And then again, most of the ratings were similar to 2015, and I'll highlight some of those comparisons, too. But it's nice to see that there was this increase from 2015 to 2017. As I noted earlier about those eight facets of the community, we kind of looked across the items for all of those and tried to see, how did those compare to the benchmarks? We found that generally, you did similarly, as I sort of mentioned, across all of these. But then we also asked residents to rate how important they felt each of these was for Pearland to concentrate on in the next two years. And the two that received the highest priority from respondents were safety and mobility. So let me come into some of our other key findings. One of the notable highlights from the survey results is that residents rate the quality of life in Pearland quite highly. About nine in 10 residents rate the quality of life here as excellent or good and think that Pearland is an excellent or good place to live. These ratings are similar to the national benchmark and similar to the ratings received in 2015. About nine in 10 survey respondents said that they would recommend living in Pearland to someone who asked, and nine in 10 say they plan to remain in Pearland for the next five years. Again, these findings are similar to the national benchmarks and to results seen in 2015. About eight in 10 respondents gave positive ratings to the overall image of Pearland, to their neighborhood, to Pearland as a place to raise children, and to the overall appearance of Pearland. The rating of the overall image was higher than the benchmark comparison, while the others were similar. And these ratings were also quite high and positive in 2015. Two-thirds of respondents rated the sense of community in Pearland as excellent or good, an increase from what we observed in 2015. And this was a rating that was similar to the national benchmark. I noted earlier that safety was one of the eight facets that was given a high priority by residents as a focus area for the next two years. We find that safety- We find that safety is often deemed as an important emphasis area because people want to live in a safe community. While it was considered important for this community, the ratings of safety were actually quite high. 85 percent of residents rated their overall feeling of safety as excellent or good, while 95 percent considered their neighborhood as very or somewhat safe. 86 percent considered the downtown or commercial areas as very or somewhat safe. We also looked at the public safety services and the evaluations given by respondents, and they were all very positive. And most of them were similar to the benchmark. Ratings for police were actually higher than the benchmark comparison. In addition, three of these safety services received more positive evaluations in 2017 than in 2015, and those included fire prevention, emergency preparedness, and animal control. Mobility was the other of the eight facets considered an important focus area of Pearland residents for the coming two years. As shown in this slide, half or fewer of residents gave excellent or good ratings to the ease of travel in Pearland. These ratings were lower than the benchmark comparisons, and they were similar to what we saw in 2015. City services related to mobility were rated positively about half or more of respondents, and three of these services saw increases compared to 2015, including street cleaning, street repair, and traffic signal timing. And these service ratings were similar to the national benchmark comparison. About one in three respondents said that they had biked or walked instead of driving alone more than once a month in the previous year, and about one in three said they had carpoolled with other adults or children instead of driving alone more than once a month in the previous year. We asked those completing the survey about how well they thought local government was operating. 80 percent of respondents thought that the overall quality of services provided by the city of Pearland were excellent or good, and 80 percent felt that city employees provided excellent or good customer service. These ratings were similar to what we observed in 2015 and were similar to the national benchmark comparison. About two-thirds felt that the city of Pearland generally acts in the best interest of the community and that the overall direction the city of Pearland is taking is excellent or good. About two-thirds felt that the city government does an excellent or good job at treating all residents fairly and dishonest. And these ratings are similar to the benchmark comparisons. In order to make these benchmark comparisons across communities, much of the National Citizen Survey is standardized. However, about half a page of the survey is devoted to questions that a community gets to decide to include. So the city of Pearland survey included questions about the sources used by residents to obtain information about city government, about their support for or opposition to property tax increases, and ratings of the leadership of city elected officials. The most common sources of information included the city website, considered a major or minor source by over 90 percent of respondents, and city publications and city social media, considered a major or minor source by about 80 percent of respondents. About three-quarters said that they obtained information by word of mouth or from local newspapers. And then here's the question that's probably of most interest. Those completing the survey were asked, please indicate to what extent you would support or oppose a property tax increase for each of the following to fund new facilities or services. And this was the list with which they were presented. And as shown here, there was strong support for increasing property taxes to fund roadway improvements, with over half strongly supporting this option and only 13 percent opposing it. Support was also strong for public safety and fire rescue services, with 46 percent strongly supporting, and an additional 33 percent somewhat supporting a property tax increase for this option. So this fits with our survey key findings that mobility and safety were considered important focus areas. Residents were willing to put their money where their mouth was. The other items that we included were also supported by more than half of respondents. The animal shelter and libraries, though, kind of received the lowest support with about 40 percent saying they would actually oppose a property tax increase for that purpose. Finally, the leadership of the city's elected officials was considered excellent or good by 69 percent of respondents. So this is a quick summary of the key findings highlighted in this presentation. It is my hope that, and that of the organization I work for, that you and city department staff will find the results useful. In our reports, we provide a great deal of information from the survey, including detailed responses for every survey question. And for many questions, breakdowns of results by respondent subgroups such as gender, age, and area of residence. We hope that you and our city staff will dive deeper into the data relevant to your missions and start discussions about the findings and create action plans to continue to make Pearland a great place to live, work, and play. Do you have any questions?
Just a comment. You know, Pearland is kind of a unique city. In year 2000, we only had 34,000 people in our 70-square-mile footprint. And today, we have 156,000. When you have growth that much, and you'll have people coming in and really trying to communicate and trying to build out west of town, which was all a cattle ranch, and there were no streets, there were no waters, there were no filling stations, there was nothing out there. And we have put an immense amount of emphasis on putting together the infrastructure to tie together the whole city. And we're still on the construction, obviously. But I think with the diversity that we have in Pearland and we have a bunch of quality citizens, everyone, everybody, and I have not met a person in Pearland that I do not like and find easygoing. It's just, give us 10 years, 20 years from now, a lot of these things will be accommodated. And it's just interesting that it came out as well in a growing community like us. A lot of cities that are only 10,000, you know, five square miles or 10 square miles, they can build that real quick and they're a full city, and that's it. And we're still on the construction, so. But I think what you have put together is some good guidance for us and some areas of emphasis. People have a perception, and sometimes the perception is pretty accurate. And in these cases, I think it gives us some great guidance, and I appreciate the work you've done on this particular one. I'll open this up with, starting with Councilmember Carbonne.
Thank you, Mayor. On those special topics, who picks those questions?
I'll let Sparkle answer that question.
City staff.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions that you see across the nation that would be interesting?
For a community to ask? I think these are, like, that source of information is often one that's included, I think, often because it's a public information officer, which is the point of contact. But definitely, you know, like, this survey included those property tax increase questions. That's often one that people will include, jurisdictions will include, because they're thinking about the future and what they might want to do, and they want to sort of gauge that support or opposition for these things. Sometimes it might be questions around, you know, planning. If you can condense those into something that would fit onto half a page, you know, if a community's going through some kind of master planning effort for one of their departments or for, you know, a comprehensive plan, they might include some questions like that on this survey.
Thank you.
Let's go to Reed. Did you have a comment?
No comment.
Could you go back to your first slide where you talked about how many surveys were sent
out? Because I'm confused on the amount of numbers.
Sure. Sorry, that's way at the beginning. Here it is. Okay. So we did a scientific sample. So a scientific survey means basically that we're trying to get that representative sample of the community, and we randomly select the households. So if you think back to a math or statistics course where you might have had the big bowl of marbles with the red and green marbles, and you sort of say, well, if I pick out 10 marbles and I count how many are red and green, if I picked those randomly, it should have a similar proportion as to what was in the bowl. So that was that scientific survey that we did.
So that was 1,800 households?
That was 1,800 households, and we received 278 surveys for 16 percent response rate. What we're finding is that response rates to surveys are declining. They sort of declined precipitously for telephone surveys, and now it's happening with mailed surveys as well. So the, you know, survey research industry is looking at other ways we can try to get this really important representative or, you know, feedback from communities. And so we're looking at, like, non-probability samples, like what you did with this opt-in survey. It's still a little experimental, but we've done a lot of work kind of looking at, and we don't always blend the results. We want to look to see, do we think it's fair? Is this sample also representative? And in this case, we did that and blended those. And we have some statistical methods I don't want to go into, but we use some propensity score weighting.
No, that's fine. I was just wondering the numbers, the amount sent out versus how much was returned.
Right. So that 455 is what we got from that opt-in, which was just a publicizing of that link.
I'd like to follow up on that question. How do we compare to the national, or y'all's average?
In terms of response rate?
Correct.
You are just kind of right in that range. What we're finding is that they, we say between 15 and 30 percent. Like I said, that kind of keeps changing because of the decline we're seeing in response rates. But I would say it's still probably that 15 to 25 percent is sort of typical of a response rate to a mailed survey with the three contacts that we have.
Do you see any correlation to overall scores in response rates? As in, if a city's doing better or worse, the response rate?
We've looked at that. It's maybe, it's a weak correlation, and it doesn't hold very well.
Then it doesn't count.
Because there's a big scatter. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. One, I think it's just, it's a testament to, I think, that Pearland is generally getting it right. You know, if you look at Facebook comments, you'd think this number would be a lot lower. But I think generally, most people are happy here and satisfied here. It's not a measure that we're doing it perfect, but we're doing, I think we're trying to do the best we can. I'm happy to see these numbers. I'm happy to see that people generally are more positive about our city's direction than negative. Obviously, I'm kind of a statistics nerd, so I'd like to see the response rate higher. I think the sample set, obviously, is for ours is relatively small, but I don't know if there's a significant way that we can improve that outside of drastically changing how we take surveys.
Right. You know, we were talking earlier with your other presentation about that balance of resources and, you know, what you'd like to do. So if we could, we'd like to say, you know, we could send somebody to the door to each of these 1,800 households and try to get them to complete the survey, but that takes a lot of effort. So I think some of the things you can do is, you know, maybe try to publicize the survey more so that people who do get that mailing are like, okay, this is important, something I want to do. But we are using a lot of survey research best practices in sending that out and trying to increase that response rate.
But we're good enough to get a good understanding of where the standard deviations are, and, you know, we get more samples. We may nudge a number here and there, but we're not going to drastically change the results of the survey.
Right.
So I think it's, like I said, I think this is really great news, but it also gives us a measure to improve upon. I mean, just because, you know, 80 percent of people are satisfied with what we're doing, you know, let's strive to get 81 or 82. You know, let's strive, let's have perfection be our goal, though it's never achievable. I also like to say that, you know, sometimes when things go right and wrong, we as a body get a lot of the credit and the blame. In this case, a lot of the credit really goes to our staff and their performance because all we do is, we legislate, we say this is what we like to do. But the implementation of these programs and their success and the interactivity with citizens, that's all through the staff. That's all, this is all, in my mind, more of a measure of their ability to do their jobs successfully as much as a measure of our ability to set good goals for them. So I really am pleased with where we're headed, and I'd like to see where we go from here.
Any other comment from council? Councilmember Carbonne.
As some of my fellow councilmen would like to see, that it looks like that some of the citizens might be in favor of tax increases. This is, I guess, even more of an argument to, for a bond election, stop issuing COs where we're not asking for the citizens' input. We're saying, no, we're just going to spend and issue the debt. I think this is clear that, you know, we do need to be working on the next bond package and put it together and put it out to the vote. And if the survey's right, then it'll pass, and we'll move on. But then, then we can move forward with voter-approved debt and not continuing to issue these certificates of obligation.
Okay. Mayor, if I could, where will this information be available to the public?
We'll be posting it on the citizen survey page on the website tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. And briefly, I don't want to take a lot of time, but in the second tab, it has the selected cities that you compared us to. Can you give me, like, 30,000 feet, how those were gathered?
Yes. It's basically, I think I said, you know, there's about 600 or so that we've, surveys from different communities we've collected over the years. We only go back five years, so, you know, some may drop off as we move forward in time. Those are, about 300 of them are surveys that NRC has conducted in the last five years, 300 to 350. And then the rest we get by, we have staff in our office who have, like, Google Alerts and things like that set up, and we go out and actively look for surveys done for other communities that weren't done by our organization. And if those are public, we find them and code them.
Okay. I was looking at the benchmarking 2017. Was that part of what y'all did or something we did?
That was a separate report, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
We just bound it together, it kind of made sense, came in at the same time.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was talking about a separate, nothing you did. Okay. Do?
I'll get that answer from staff later.
Anything else from council? Let me make just one wrap-up comment, and that is, I speak quite frequently to organizations and groups, and usually the comments, some of them are covered in this survey, about the taxes and the traffic and the other things, and when we're going to get some nightlife stuff. And I've always made the comment, I says, well, I agree, we're trying to build a city, and we're doing a pretty good job so far, I believe. But if you drive another mile here, there are about three cities local that you go to that don't have this, maybe it's higher taxes and don't have the traffic problem. And the comment usually is, yeah, but I want to live in Pearland. So I figure, okay, it costs a little bit more here because that's what the appraisal district says it is. But thank you for this study. I think it gives us some good guidance. I think there's areas that we need to really look at. And unless you know what the road problems are, you don't know what kind of problems you're going to run into when you drive it. So this will help us a great deal. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
And thank you so much, Sparkle, for bringing this to us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that information in the record, let's move in our agenda down to item number six on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. And it, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda, which consists of items A through G?
I'd like to remove C and G.
You move C and what?
G.
And G. C and G. Okay. Any other?
Mr. Mayor?
None. Councilmember Carbonne, would you?
Hang on.
Mr. Mayor, I think item number F, we probably need to remove that, too, because of what's listed in the resolution.
You want to do it F, too?
Sure, I'll do F, too.
Okay. C, G, and F. That information in the record, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through G excluding C, F, and G. So moved.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Any comment on this item? Hearing none. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbonne?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Consent agenda was approved, A through G with the exception of C, F, CG, and F with a 5-0 vote with Councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Okay. Mr. Carbonne, would you present item C for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, Resolution R 2017-39, a resolution awarding a base bid for construction of intersection improvements at Pearland Parkway and Broadway. So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item C is a award of construction contract a couple weeks ago.
Couple weeks ago, council recall, we talked about intersection improvements and wanted to expand it, but this is actually one that we've had teed up and are ready to move forward on. This is increasing the capacity at Pearland Parkway, at Broadway, for southbound traffic. The intersection there allows us to put in an additional left turn lane for that southbound traffic, which will improve that. We'd be going into and taking out some of that median that's currently there.
Okay. Council having a question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Question on the budget impact. The expenditure required, a little over $300,000. That's listed as other funding sources. Where's that coming from?
We may have to get back to you on that one, I guess. Apparently, we're on the C that...
While we're looking at that, the second question is, the engineer estimate looks like it came in for construction costs of $182,000 and, I'm sorry, it was less than that. It was, the bids came in 44 percent higher than the construction estimates. And I know we're going with the low bid, but I was wondering if staff could give any more input as to why the discrepancy between the budget estimate and the actual bid.
Councilman, I'd like to address your first question. The money, the money is budgeted in the capital projects fund, the pay-as-you-go fund, and it was approved and presented in this capital improvement program for council approval for the budget year.
Okay, so is the pay-as-you-go CIP?
Yes, sir.
It might have been, there's a line item that, it's made, general says other improvements that might be why it's called that way. The line detail might be, that just may be the description for the account number.
Okay.
Any other question?
We still got the other question here.
And just one more on the funding source. So there was a fund, 50 fund balance that was, I guess we had closed out Fund 50 and transferred this over into funding this project, and that's why it was designated as other funding sources in the CIP.
Okay.
Any other question on this item? I'm sorry, still questioning.
Councilmember Carbone, in regards to the engineer's estimate, he was doing what they had at the time that they had available for that, and we're just seeing with commodities and higher prices on that right now is where we're at.
Okay. Are we seeing a 40, 43 percent increase across the board on all the other projects?
No, we're seeing, this is a smaller project, and we're seeing it on, just happens to be on this particular project, and we're evaluating why that is with our engineer as well. But that is the prices that we're seeing right now with that particular construction contract.
Okay. All right.
Yes, sir.
With the citizen survey, we just saw mobility is one of the top two, so I think this intersection will help relieve some of the traffic on the Parkway as well as some of the cross-traffic down Providence. So I look forward to getting this going.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I have one. Go ahead. So the entrance prior to FM 518, there, that we're, looks like we're going to do some fancy in, one in, one out lane there between the median. Can we not make that thing like, only like eight foot wide? Can we not make that a bigger width so that people just don't run over it and we end up replacing concrete all the time? We've got room there.
Where are you looking at, sir? So I make sure I look.
Can you?
I think he's talking about the directional island.
Yeah, the directional island.
The slip lefts or the hooded lefts.
Are you talking?
Just making sure that the openings there.
Yeah. I mean, all the openings that we have now are like super, super small. They're like maybe eight foot wide, and people continually run over those curbs, and we're just going to have to replace the concrete. So we have space there.
Yes, sir.
So can we just make them wider more so than more, than narrow?
Yes, sir. We have to take a look at that, make sure the turning radiuses were designed, they were designed with the ability to bring the truck traffic in.
Yeah, because I have a hard time driving my truck through some of those little slip-in lanes.
Understand. No, these should be wide enough to handle the semis that will come in, because you've got to go, and you're turning in towards lows, too, and they're receiving their product. So our design engineer made sure that those will be wide.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comment?
Yes, Mayor. Were there, did your staff take a look at the engineer's estimate versus the low bid? Was there any particular items that were significantly higher? Are we seeing that concrete's going higher? Are we seeing that rebars, well, they wouldn't itemize rebar, but are there any particular items? This is a fairly simple project, so are we paying, we think that we're paying a premium because of its size and there's contractors just aren't hungry enough for it?
Correct. We only had three bidders on this project, and so we're taking a look at that. We're also looking is that, a lot of our projects also use our very large scale. So when you take a look at, like example, Bailey Road, where you have massive amounts of concrete, so we're also developing our costs and making sure our engineers are also developing their costs for the smaller base project, too. You know, $200,000 project or $150,000 project is far less than a $5 million or $10 million project in terms of the value associated with that. So it is a small project.
Do you think we were just getting an engineer's estimate that was based on higher volumes and they were using unit prices on higher volumes as opposed to a low-volume project?
We're evaluating that and taking a look at that, but it would not be out of line to make that statement, too, as well. So we're taking a look at that, make sure we have this set up both ways.
Any other comment from council? Hearing none, we do have a motion, second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Consent item C, resolution 2017-39, is approved 5 to 0 with Councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Okay. With information in the record, Councilmember Carbone, would you present the item F?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2017-45, resolution creating an ad hoc committee to review the conditional use permit requirements and related processes, so moved.
Second.
Thanks, Mayor.
Second on the floor, Mr. Staff report.
So council had requested this committee to put some eyes on to the conditional use and some other related processes. You talked about that at the last meeting, and I apologize, but due to just a clerk error, you talked about, and I just had the first hands up, but members Carbone, Perez, and Reed, actually, to be appointed to that. You can have up to three members on a committee like this, I guess. So we'd ask consideration just to amend it as, if that's your will, as what you decided last time.
Is there any problem with substituting that name at this point? That was the intent, it's really a typographical error in that sense.
It is, and if the council could, since the resolution has been presented as is and was put on the agenda that way, I'd recommend that the council go ahead and proceed with a motion to amend this resolution to substitute Councilmember Reed for whichever members.
Yes, okay. Okay, would Councilmember Carbone, would you amend this motion?
I'll make it, Mayor. I move to substitute my name in for Mayor Pro Tim Gary Moore.
You want to do what now?
I move to substitute my name. It doesn't sound like I got a second, but I move to substitute my name for Mayor Pro Tim Gary Moore.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Mayor. I think with the formation of this committee and right now, and only having technically three members, though it's not part of the motion, I think we need to discuss what our first, what we're going to do first to create movement with this committee. And I would say that, I would suggest that we find a date in the near future for at least the three council members and a couple of members of senior staff to meet and talk about what other, what other staff members we need to have as part of this. I don't know if that's best to discuss via email and try and come up to a consensus, but that would be my suggestion, essentially.
I would think that you need to go ahead and set a meeting date, and then y'all are going to talk about that in your committee.
But can we vote on the amendment that's on the floor?
We have an amendment. It was our second on that that I hear. We do have a motion, a second. Those in favor of that amendment? Anything else? City attorney?
Oh, no, it's the 95.
We have an amendment. Those in favor of that indicate, raise right hand. We now have an amended motion on the table. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Hearing none, we do have a motion, second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Consent item F, resolution 2017-45, is approved 5 to 0 with Councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Okay. Councilmember Carbone, would you present item G for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution R 2017-33, resolution adopting an updated naming rights asset list associated with commemorative naming policy for city facilities and parks, so moved.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
I'll ask Mr. Branson if he might be able to highlight this one for us.
Earlier this year, council approved a policy that basically established sponsorship for various types of facilities, and what we said we would do is bring back to you at this time a list of facilities and a recommended amount so that we could then go out and publicize this. The Forever Parks Foundation could then go out and try and secure sponsorships for the various facilities. So what you have before you this evening is a list of those and the associated dollar amounts.
Any other question or comment on that item?
I guess the question I had is, how do we come up with these values and are these market rate, or do we expect, expect to be able to reasonably get the support that we've got at this price level?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We actually worked with a consultant, proxy sponsorships. They've got extensive experience in valuing naming rights for properties and felt very comfortable with the amounts that they recommended.
Okay. Do we have any interest so far?
We have, yes.
All right. And when these sponsorships are sold, the funding goes to the new nonprofit?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question or comment?
Yes, I have one, Mayor. Why, why do we only have just the Shadow Creek Ranch, Sportsplex, and the amphitheater and dog park and pavilion kind of put there? Is there not anything that we can do for the Max Road Soccer Complex?
This is just the beginning of our naming rights process as we, we do plan for expanding in the future. This is just the beginning. Each, for each different facility, we'll bring the naming right asset list.
Because I do know that there's a group of very, very active people that would like to participate in basically upgrading Max Road Soccer Complex.
Okay.
And if we could get something in place sooner than later on that, maybe that would make that a better facility for them to use, and they're willing to donate money, so.
Okay, absolutely.
Any other comment or question? Hearing nothing else. You know, city business can get a little complex, and so trying to unwind some of it to meet our transparency and adequate discussion to make sure that we get it right as possible, sometimes take a little discussion to do that. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
And Perez?
Aye.
Consent item G, resolution 2017-33, is approved 5 to 0 with Councilmember Hill absent from the chamber.
Okay. Let's now move to item seven on our collective agenda, which is new business. Moving to new business, item number one. Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2017-35, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. We do have a capital improvement project underway, that is to renovate and upgrade the facilities of this building and the annex, HBC that goes along with that. We've got three separate item contract awards here. We're a bit outside of the general contract, but we're included in the budget for various pieces. The first one's for the furniture and fixtures. We are obviously going to use as much of the existing equipment as possible, but there's new spaces, new common work areas, et cetera, that needs to have office furniture suitable to that space, and so that's what this first item is for presented.
Okay. Does council have any question or comment on this item? Councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. The show's expenditure required 400 K and budgeted 300. Can staff expound on that, or are we $100,000 over budget on this project, or on the furniture for this project?
We did have some allowances for each of those pieces, and so, Trent, can you highlight that part of it?
Sure. I'm not exactly sure where the amount budgeted came from, but if you take the furniture purchase and then the following two items, which are the purchase of the audio visual equipment as well as the access control to the buildings, we had budgeted for the three of those 800, almost $860,000, and the total of those proposed to be awarded tonight is 833,586. So about $26,000 under what was budgeted for the three of them combined.
Okay. I'm just looking on the face of the agenda request.
Right. I see that, and I'm not sure where that number came from, because I know our actual expenditure here for our furniture, I believe, came in under what we were originally estimating. I think that 297,941 is just an incorrect number.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other question or comment from council? Hearing none, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-35 is approved 5 to 0 with Councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Moving to new business item two. Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, resolution number R 2017-44, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So this piece is the door access, the key, the swipes system provides for better security. It also makes it much easier to manage. You don't have hard keys that are floating around and inevitably grow over time, so once these are in, then, you know, that system's in place and you can manage different accesses. Ah, I see three up in front of me. So two is the, that's the low voltage system, all the cabling, the projection screens, the data drops, et cetera. We use Data Box for us, and that gets it, gets it going for those two buildings.
And if I may, just a clarification, back to the previous one, the amount budgeted showed on this AR, the $7.66 million is what should have been shown on that previous one. Same project, so that's the actual amount budgeted. You see the amount available is 898, and then the expenditure required for each of these is within the available amount.
Okay. Any question on that item? I don't hear any question from council on this item. We do have a motion and a second on the table. Mr. Secretary?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-44 is approved five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Moving to new business item three, councilmember Ordno, would you do the honor?
Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017-43. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussions. Staff report.
So this is for the key card swipes for all the doors for security and access.
Council have any question or comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this system going to integrate with the other buildings in the city?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other question or comment?
What are we using as a metric to determine what requires key card security access and what does not?
One of the things we're relying on is that the Pearland Police Department did a security assessment of this facility a few years back. And although a lot of the door locations and some of the, what they looked at at that time will change with the project. We use the basis of what they used to determine that. So basically, you've got secured staff areas versus the public areas. And so similar to what we have here in City Hall to enter those areas, you'll have the key card swipe.
So is it generally where we're handling money, where we may have secure personnel?
It's basically any place that's staff locations, except for our public entryways and our public meeting spaces, including where we handle money.
Okay.
Some of that will, I believe, will be spent on upgrading the videos in the council chamber and the sound, I hope, perhaps a little bit better. Any other question or comment from council? Hearing none, we do have motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
And Moore?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-43 passed five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Okay. That information is record. Let's move to item number four on our collective agenda. Let's look at councilmember Perez. Get from him over there.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017-38. So moved.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. We need a staff reporter on this item.
Chance over to Mr. Buchanan. He's got, talked about the improvements for South Spectrum in our Lower Kirby District. There's two items related to that here.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Buchanan with the Pearland EDC. As you'll remember, last year, we approved the Ivy District Plan Development for the Lower Kirby District. And part of that approval was subject to the developer and the city entering into a development agreement for off-site infrastructure, which we have before you tonight, and then also a development agreement for the onsite amenities and park space. And that DA will come back to you at a later time. Both four and, items four and five are related. The first is the development agreement with American Modern Green for the Ivy District. And they'll be constructing South Spectrum Boulevard East as a part of this project and a portion of Promenade Shops Drive. And then together with the city and the district and the EDC, South Spectrum on the west side, which will connect South Spectrum all the way over to Kirby Drive. So you have the development agreement for you. And then also before you, you have a reimbursement agreement, which is number five, where the city, the EDC will be funding the city's portion of the project. And then two financing agreements where we will get reimbursed by the districts when the tax base of the districts is sufficient to do so. So it's about $7 million plus of infrastructure that we'll get that will serve both the Ivy District project and land west of there, all the way over to Kirby and Round Blonds area. So it's a good projects, good partnership with the American Modern Green. We're very appreciative of the time and effort that's taken. John Chang, Drew Pelter, and Stephen Boyd are all here who have all worked on this agreement. So be happy to answer any questions.
Have you question or comment from council?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. After assuming these items pass tonight, where are we at in terms of getting dirt moving and some value on the ground?
They'll be able to. There's a plat that needs to be approved, but then they'll be able to start South Spectrum and Promenade. And then we're still working with their attorney and Mr. Chang on the agreement for the park and off-site, the onsite agreement.
Okay.
So hopefully we'll be back to you in a month or so.
But the roads have been bid already.
Yeah, the roads.
The east, the Promenade and.
Promenade and South Spectrum East have both already been bid.
They've already been bid or are ready to go.
Any other question? Oh, councilmember Reed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Who's going to be responsible for the buildout of the turn-in and turnout on the Frontage Road?
On 288? I don't believe there'll be any improvements necessary on the Frontage Road. If you'll remember, the Frontage Road is in, and then probably almost, I'll say half of South Spectrum is already in. That was built for previous projects. So this project will be just affecting from that continuation westward all the way over to Kirby.
So there's not going to be any lanes, any additional lanes added, or is that going to be part of the 288 project?
We still need to finalize the TIA, but I don't believe, there might be a D cell lane on, there is already a D cell lane on 288. But that'd be up to the developer if that, if the TIA justifies it.
I, for some reason, I thought the TIA did justify it in speaking with Mark about that. That coming out of that, coming out of Spectrum or coming off of Spectrum onto 288 justified some additional lane. I mean, because of the excess traffic right now, even, you know, on a Sunday morning. As it stands right now, that's an exit ramp that comes right off of 288 into Spectrum. And so you'll have people trying to get over real quick. There's no turn-in lane also, by the way.
If you're coming southbound, there's a D cell lane that you then turn right into the. Yeah. And you also got to realize the previous TIA that Mark would have been speaking to you about with Cobb Finley would have been based on the Promenade and the South Spectrum being the only routes in and out. And the first TIA we had didn't have even Promenade. So now with this proposal, with Kirby, with the road going all the way over to Kirby, I think they think that that'll have a, you know, a decrease in the level of service at that interchange because more people will be able to go west instead of everyone. When the first TIAs were submitted, everyone had to go, pretty much the first TIA, everyone had to go east.
I believe there was some discussion in there of the possibility of an acceleration lane out of there. But it, what I recall is that they also have another road south of there where they're going to tie into the Frontage Road. And that, you know, a D cell and an acceleration lane, acceleration lane from Spectrum and a D cell lane from that would basically cause some conflict. So I don't know that that ever got settled with TaxDOT, exactly what they would want to see there. And as Matt said, now that we've got the connection over to Kirby, there may, there's going to be a change in the traffic patterns and the traffic counts that are going to proceed or going to go out to the Frontage Road. So I think we need to take a look at that again and as well as get back, have the developer get back with TaxDOT to see what TaxDOT's requirements are.
And with your action here tonight, they would then finalize that TIA as part of this process.
So if there is a need for it, then it will, are you saying that with our action here tonight, we're saying that there is no need for it and it'll finalize?
No, 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 no. That's not governing the TIA process. That would still be, need to be completed.
Any other question or comment?
Yes, Mayor. So the South Spectrum's going to come over, it's going to dogleg and it's going to tee into Kirby. And that's been designed and bid and.
Just east of Promenade has been bid. From Promenade all the way over to Kirby, that has not been bid. We just did a PER for that, so we're at 30% design right now. So if you look there, everything that's from the interchange on your right, all the way over to Kirby, that has not been bid.
What I'd like to see is included in the PER for that section is what we're going to do with Mitsubishi's driveway. We're going to close down that.
Sure. And we've met with Mitsubishi and had meetings with them about that. And then we've also, in the PER, I believe they've got some estimates of what it'll cost to reconfigure that interchange.
And is the district going to take responsibility for relocating that driveway and relocating that left turn lane?
You know, we've had a conversation with Mitsubishi about what they would like to see. And then we've not had any follow-up discussion with them since then.
I would just, because that left turn lane at $100,000 was built not too long ago.
Sure, sure.
And my personal belief is that should have been identified when that design came in. A project I was a part of, full disclosure, but that was not identified as a place where a future driveway would need to be. There was not an opportunity for us to relocate the driveway and rebuild that to where it would meet up with the future road. I would hate to see a major investor in our community, who, we put a lot of time and energy to get them here. And we brag about them a lot. And then we turn over and say, yeah, you spent 100 grand, but we're going to make you spend it again.
Sure.
That driveway was specifically placed there and we're going to move it, we're going to change it on them. I think that would be, I would hate for us to cheat, treat any citizen like that, whether it be corporate or just an average, everyday guy. So if we can include in the development of those plans, the design of that driveway, the relocation of that left turn lane and the median opening, and some idea of how, I would suggest the district pays for that.
Sure.
I would appreciate it.
It'll have to be, the district will not pay for it. It'll have to either be the city or the EDC that would have to pay for that.
Some sort of plan.
Sure.
Any other question or comment? Did you finish your comment, councilmember Reed?
Is what you're suggesting that we amend what's already here? No. Okay.
I think, I think what you've got planned there is an adequate addressing of that issue because of the huge detention pond area and the other TaxDOT right of ways through there. So I think that's a good plan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other question or comment, council? Hearing none, we do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Reed?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-38 is approved five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Okay. Let's move down to item five. Councilmember Carbone, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution R 2017-37. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're ready for staff report.
Yes, sir. So same topic, but this is a separate agreement for the financing that's coming from the management district. Reimbursements then of the EDC, et cetera, for the fronting of the money for the project.
Nice seat there. Getting a little help there. That's good. Any further question from council or comments? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Reed? Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-37 is approved five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Move to item number six. Councilmember Reed, would you do the honor, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017-36. So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Mr. Coker's got this one for you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, this is an item that was previously requested by council to have the PDC consider a bylaw change to sort of mimic the state law that applies to council and some other boards of the city with respect to automatic resignation provisions when a person files for another elected office. Currently, as it applies to elected officials, it actually is triggered if you have more than a year left on your term of office. This is a little bit stricter guideline that the EDC just recently considered as a change to their bylaws. And it is in fact, an automatic resignation provision that becomes effective immediately upon any member of the board's candidacy for elected office. And then they would, there is not a holdover provision as there is under state law. They would cease to have any authority to serve on the board immediately upon their candidacy. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that.
Does council have any question or comment on this item?
Yes, Mayor.
Just for clarification, announcement of candidacy, is that officially filing? Or is that making any public declaration that you intend to run?
Not just any public, well, I guess it depends on what is defined as public. But the Attorney General has written several opinions on this. And it's not just simply filing for public office. For instance, and give an example that I use with the EDC board, if a person is at a chamber event and speaking to the chamber and then announces that I'm, I plan to be filing for office, to announce my candidacy, and they're announcing that they're going to run, that is considered a public declaration at that point, although they have not actually filed. A person who actually does a press release in the newspaper but still hasn't filed their paperwork would be considered to have filed, or not considered to file, but will have, be considered to have made a public declaration for candidacy, even though they have not filed the official paperwork.
We'd maintain that threshold relatively high as opposed to somebody heard somebody say something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I generally apologize to our public officials who are incumbent and then announce they're going to run for governor or some other position. They have to resign. So it's, it's one that, you don't run for governor, are you? Okay, okay. Any other question or comment from council? We do have a motion and a second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ordno?
Aye.
Perez?
Aye.
Carbone?
Aye.
Resolution 2017-36 is passed five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Let's move on our agenda to item seven. Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, resolution number R 2017-41. So moved.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is at our central, where we've put a lot of our servers and the hub for a lot of our essential computer network, which is located in the Public Safety Building. It's a hardened building. We've got interior to their, the server room. We do have a generator for the facility, but this is additional belts on the spenders, if you will, to improve the reliability and keep that system up and running. This is the eventuality of if the generator doesn't kick on right away for some reason and/or if the switchgear that would move the power into this room, which had happened to us and really flagged it for us this year. This would give us about two hours of battery life. So if something happened in the middle of the night, we'd get an alert and be able to go there and power down the systems in an orderly way, rather than just being a sudden cutoff which causes us major problems for the data that's there, as you can understand, it gets corrupted and so forth. So right now, we do have some just rudimentary battery backup. But it's a matter of probably 15 minutes. And like I said, you know, it's realistically, as you can understand, we can't get anybody over there to shut things down or look at it if we have an issue with the generator. I do need to ask, just glancing at the agenda item, this is a new item. It says it was budgeted. I think, are we taking this from contingency? I didn't see that that was highlighted. That's the case. So just so you know, we would propose and ask that your consideration to take this from our contingency budget that we have in the general fund.
I read an article in the paper just recently about the coal mine over in Ukraine where they have the equipment, the facility that would refine that. And it's designed to run constantly on electricity. And if for some reason that was, it was terminated, the plant could not be started back up. And it would be useless from that point or you can't restart it. So this is not quite that critical, but I think it's something that is smart to think about these before something like that happens. And I think, I think it's part of the thing that I think our staff has done, and that is what if. And I think there's a lot of what ifs you got to think about. And we're just curating, curating what I brought here, very simple. So council have any question or comment on, councilmember Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you expound on the budget issue? Because the agenda request shows that we've got it budgeted.
And that item has, the city manager has a contingency budget. And the funds have been moved over into that particular account. That's why it shows that it's in that account. Obviously, it takes council's approval to approve the item. But the funds have been moved into that particular account for the CM contingency.
Okay. So when it comes to budget time, can you remind us that there's a CM contingency fund we can look at?
Yes. It's a flat number. I believe this past year was $250,000. And that's typical. Every year, there's an amount in that overall budget.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And so on future agenda items, I'd like that to be disclosed somewhere in the agenda request.
Absolutely. And that's why, that's why Clay brought that to your attention because it wasn't outlined there. We'll make that happen in the future.
Okay. And in the, in the write-up, there's the department recommendations, installing the UPSs, changing some busway systems, and then relocating some of the current UPSs. Does this bid with the labor and installation include the relocation of the old systems?
No, we're going to do that in-house.
Okay. And in terms of any preventative maintenance and/or extended warranty on these systems, what, have we looked into that?
The preventative maintenance is going to be roughly $10,000 a year.
Okay. Will we take that out of the city manager's contingency as well? You don't have to answer that.
Any other comments from council regarding this item? Councilmember Reed, did you have a comment on that? Okay. No comment. We do have a motion second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Ordno.
Aye.
Perez.
Aye.
Carbone.
Aye.
Reed.
Aye.
Resolution 2017-41 is approved five to zero with councilmember Hill absent from the chambers.
Let's move to, we have motion second and we cleared this pretty well, the new business. Let's move to item number eight on our collective agendas, which is council mayor issues for future council agendas. Are there any that you'd like to enter for future council agendas at this point?
Yes, Mayor. And I'm pretty sure my other council members probably had something similar. I'm not sure. Anyways, thank you to the residents that came out and spoke at the beginning of the meeting. We definitely heard you. And I want to make a, or ask that we have on our next executive session agenda, the discussion for us to hire a independent consultant to come in and audit the contract and also the Blue Ridge landfill, an environmental consultant. Also, take any recommendations that the task force may have if they meet between now and then. Our next meeting would be on the 20th. And so any recommendations that the task force may have for that environmental consultant. So hopefully that'll happen within the next, will it happen before then?
No, sir. I actually sent out a meeting poll last week. I could, I could do it again, but right now we're tentatively scheduled to meet on the 22nd.
We had a schedule conflict. We couldn't get really a substantial number of us on the task force there until the 22nd.
Well, if something could be sent out to the task force so they can maybe respond with some recommendations, I'm pretty sure there's some folks on there that know, or that maybe, may be able to suggest a good environmental consultant for us. And then also that since most of us will be going to Brazoria County Day, you know, that we take the opportunity that we have with, with our state reps and senators to talk to them about, you know, what's going on here in Pearland with regards to Blue Ridge landfill and, and ask them to advocate specifically for, you know, better environment essentially. And to those that serve on the environmental task force or committee in Austin, to pay attention to this issue, just as we did for Pearland Day in Austin. And if I can just jump in, not, not only just foster support from them, but to try to get them to get a resolution on this sooner than later.
Uh huh. Okay. Anything else?
That's it for me, Mayor.
That's right. Good. We've, we've had a nice session here tonight. We had some good input from our citizens. And we've also had some very, a great opportunity to see some of the development in our public safety and the, how the citizens look at the service and the community. And I think, I think it's been a good night. And we did that all before nine o'clock. And I thought it was about midnight before we got home, but I think I can still get, get home and still have a sandwich yet. That's all.
If I could just say one other thing, Mayor. Thank you for the residents from Shattuck Creek Ranch that are impacted by the landfill for staying here with us all night. Since this was our last item to discuss, thank you for staying here with us this time.
There's no other business that we have, but item nine says that it's spelled out adjourn. So this gives me an opportunity to adjourn. And thank all of you for.